Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a rather packed agenda, including a joint meeting with the Charter Revision Commission, who I want to welcome and thank you for being here with us tonight. This is also our regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and we do have a few quick items that we think we will go through very quickly. If any of the items we anticipate are longer or people want more discussion, we'll move that to after the Charter Revision, but I would like to get staff home to the extent we can. So, we begin our public meetings as we always do with public audience. In December, when we were first elected, we adopted a rule as the board, which is to allow five minutes for individuals from the public to speak. It's my job as the First Selectman to conduct the meeting according to the rules we adopted, and so we do offer public audience for up to five minutes. I invite members of the public to speak now. Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. I have attended most of the Charter Revision Commission meetings and was impressed with the fact-finding deliberations that were discussed at every meeting. They had testimony from town managers, First Selectmen, and mayors from several towns. Past First Selectmen, Peggy Shanks, Anita Millet, Mary Glassman, all gave testimony on the need for professional management with the town manager to reduce the risk to the town. Members from boards and commissions gave testimony to the commission. Members of the Board of Selectmen did not give any testimony before the commission, although past practice had members giving testimony. The time to address all issues was during, not after, the conclusion. Since the Board of Selectmen are not in favor of the conclusion of the Charter Revision Commission in having a professional town manager, and First Selectman Lisa Hevena will not have any authority or executive power but will be a figurehead, they have placed roadblocks in the path of having this document, as written, go to referendum vote. The town attorney told the Board of Selectmen that a vote to bring the charter to a vote would be in affirmation of the document, and they did not agree is in their best interest. It appears that this becomes a political football. The commission took their charge seriously and came to their conclusions with much deliberation. The most deliberative and exhaustive process was finally deciding on having a town manager as a CEO of Simsbury and having an elected First Selectman in a political position. It is my opinion that the members of the Charter Revision Commission, having had exhaustive meetings on all subjects, should vote to send the charter, as written, to the Board of Selectmen and have them go on record as being obstructionist if they vote not to give the people a vote on the charter with a town manager. Recently, there were tax bills came out, and all the taxpayers had this. When I opened my tax bill, I found a flyer with advertising for the Simsbury Free Bike, Talcum Mountain Music Festival, and the incorrect information on the Performing Arts Concerts. It appears that the town has now become an advertising agency for private organizations. This is very unusual practice to insert advertising in tax bills. Who paid for the newsletter and why distribute this advertising in tax bills? Presently, as you walk into Town Hall, you will see a box and flyers asking for donations to the Performing Arts, another private organization. What is the significance? What significance does the gunpost to have affixed to the wall in Town Hall? Why does First Selectman Lisa Hevena and Director Administrative Services, Tom Cook, allow private advertising in Town Hall? Is this another political favor to the political cronies? Since attendance is low at these concerts, and most people come from out of town, and our residents are inconvenienced, maybe it is time to eliminate the concert from the meadows and return the land to the taxpayers for recreation. There is an application pending for a four-story apartment house on the property adjacent to Performing Arts, which appears to be incompatible with the concerts. The Performing Arts Senior Center has finally hit roadblocks. The Performing Arts do not want to share the structure. The seniors do not want the senior center in the meadows sharing the building with the Performing Arts. Letters were written from the Conservation Commission on the negative environmental impact of having the building on the environmentally sensitive land. A letter was sent to First Selectman Lisa Hevena from the Conservation Commission stating, and I quote, "The Simsbury Conservation Commission adopted this statement at a regular meeting on June 7, 2016. The Conservation Commission strongly advises against locating the senior center community center at Simsbury Meadows. The wetlands and wildlife habitat in that open space have already suffered damage and are under unrelenting pressure from the parking and other demands attended to facilities developed there heretofore." End quote. The Board of Finance is not embracing the costs associated with the building. Eno Hall should remain the senior center. On July 4, 2016, at approximately 8:30 p.m., I heard and viewed fireworks coming from Steve Antonio's house at 133 Holcomb Street. There were aerial displays with continual boomers coming from his home where friends and family were gathered. I called the police to address the issue. At a later date, I called the fire department and spoke with Kevin Kowalski, the fire marshal, about my concern with what appeared to be illegal fireworks. Kevin Kowalski stated that aerials and boomers are illegal, and Steve Antonio did not have a permit. Was First Selectman Lisa Hevena invited to Steve Antonio's fireworks display on his property? And when will this activity be reviewed for compliance?
Ms. Coe, you are out of order. Please stop.
All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening, and I think it would be courteous just to let me finish a sentence.
Ms. Coe, I'm not going to get into this. We have rules. It's my job to run the meeting according to the rules we have adopted. We don't give anyone any special treatment.
Even the federal government gives extra seconds.
We don't give any special treatment to any individual. Thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I'm appearing before this joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Charter Revision Commission as a candidate for the 16th District for State House, House of Representatives, State of Connecticut, and as a citizen of the town of Simsbury. But I would feel remiss if I didn't make a remark regarding the recent events that are occurring in Dallas, Texas. I'm a veteran, and I object to anybody getting up in front of the public audience and in front of television worldwide saying, I quote, "Goddamn white America." I object to it, and I feel that I'd be remiss if I didn't remind my representatives, both local, state, and federal, that this has to be addressed. They have no right, nobody has a right, to call anybody or goddamn anything. They're not God Almighty, and they have no right to do it. And in addition to that, they have no right to single people out and curse them. And I object to it. I object to it as a citizen. I object to it as a veteran, and I think it behooves the government to stop playing hate games, and let's get to the matter and call in, and let's get a government, United States Attorney down there to investigate what's going on. And that concludes it. And I took too much of my time to address that issue. Now, the other issue that I'd like to go into is the 5th District, the 5th Congressional District. You may not want to accept it. It's corrupt. And if you want me to name names and places, I will. But just for a few, we'll go with Lucian Wilson Foley, who's just out of prison. To name another one, we'll go with the State House Speaker, Mr. Donovan, though he was involved, he was never indicted, but anybody associated with him that ran his campaign all went to prison. And it still exists today. And then we go back to the cronyism that exists, and that's one of the reasons we're having this Charter Revision meeting. How many bites of the apple do you want? And here they are again, all over. Now, it's been my understanding in past Charter Revisions Committee that the appointment is made by the Board of Selectmen. They make their appointments. They step away. In the Charter Revision Commission, the people that are appointed, they do their job. It's none of this, "Come back and you get a second bite of the apple." And we all know what the second bite of the apple is for. It's self-serving. I saw it. I attended the meeting. Everybody and some of them are here tonight, including the Chamber. Where is it written that the citizens of Simsbury have to give the Chamber $5,000, like we did last year? And here again, they're all here, the Chamber and others, they're all here to save the Economic Development Commission. You look down the street, and these, what is it, two, three, four years, still not anything has happened. We look down the street, we see the gas station. That's falling apart. And what are they doing? And the last time you sat here and you voted and you gave them $10,000 to run a commercial, to run a film, saying how great the Economic Commission is. This is your responsibility. It's in the Charter. The Charter people voted to give that to you, and when it was brought up for the second time, they voted, right? And the charge was led by Mr. Patich, and he said, "We're not going to go into this," and they voted not to go into it. And here we are again. And the other thing that I'd like to bring forth to you, you know, you're not being honest with your citizens. Now, you have the social services in town, right? Do you know that you have social workers that go out, and the town doesn't even have the money to give them a business card? They have to print their business cards on stock paper. But yet, we had $15,000 to give to Mr. Dave Ryan for his two go-karts or his one go-kart, and you voted for it. And I want to stop this corruption in town, and if I'm elected, I will.
Thank you, Mr. Kalasman. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
It's nonsense.
Chip.
Chip Ullahan, 2 Somerset Lane. And I'm the President of the Chamber of Commerce, and we like to be involved in the town in many ways. And one of the ways that we've been participating lately, and we've had the opportunity to address both commissions, but we wanted to repeat it in this joint mission, is our request that the Board of Selectmen do not accept the recommendation to eliminate the Economic Development Commission. The findings that are contained misunderstand the role that the EDC has had traditionally. It suggests that it's a commission that is required...
You assumed it was loud enough, so...
I try to be. It suggests that it's a commission that a developer is required to go to, that it adds a burden on an applicant for development in the town, which is simply not the case. It is an option available for a developer to get the sense of the community, to see how the community responds to a new proposal before they go to the Land Use Commission or sometimes even during the Land Use Commission process. It is not mandatory, but it is an opportunity for a developer to get input and feedback and hear what the community wants. It's something that's taken advantage of by many people, but it is not, in this town, a regulatory burden as it's depicted in the findings. It suggests that other people in the town should be championing economic development, and that is true, and that has always been the case. The First Selectmen, the Selectmen, other people and leaders in town have always been championing economic development and with a great deal of success. What the Economic Development Commission allows is an opportunity, an escape valve where businesses can't get heard. The Economic Development Commission was vital in changing the floodplain years ago because the land use commissions did not want to hear it. They did not want to address it, and it exposed the town to liability for having a non-scientific floodplain drawn. And it sparked the change. It's been involved in a number of things, most recently helping to revise the website, first for the Economic Development Commission, and then for the town as well. The Economic Development Commission is a signal to others outside of the community that the town values economic development, and it has a body that is available and responsive and can communicate with them without being part of the regulatory process. We think that it's vital to maintain it. If there's disappointment with how it's performed, then the Board of Selectmen, of course, controls the appointments to the board and can demand more leadership if need be. But the fact that it exists, that we've given it the priority in the Charter, is very important, and so we would ask that that be retained, and I may return for comments individually after others have spoken.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public audience? Okay, seeing none. Did you want to speak? You've got about a minute and a half if you want to...
I wanted to simply make a comment, since it will be discussed here tonight, about the idea of a professional town manager.
Mr. Kalasman, you are out of order. Everyone gets five minutes. Mr. Ullahan has not used his five minutes. You now have an extra 10. That is enough. That is enough. Chip.
And the point is simply this, that the balance has to be between, has to involve leadership of the town as well as executive competence. And we've talked for a long time about having people come in as a professional manager. I would suggest to the Board and to the Commission that there is value in having political leadership. Political leadership is what brought us Iron Horse Boulevard. It's what brought us the Performing Arts Center. It's what brought a lot of value to the town. Operating the town is something more than simply professional competent administration. That can be accomplished with people with that position. But for the leadership of the town, for someone that knows what the people want, who has roots and commitment to the town, it's useful to have citizens who are motivated enough to take on leadership positions. And for that reason, I think that we should retain the First Selectman's job with perhaps board appointments of professional managers for the operational details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ullahan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak of public audience? Seeing none, we will move on. We will go on to, what I'm going to do is we're going to do a couple of quick presentations. We're going to start with Jeff because we do have staff who needs to get home. I'm going to move the First Selectman's report to the end of the meeting so that we can get forward with the commissions, and then we've got a few quick action items with town staff so we can get them home during regular business hours. So, we'll begin with Jeff. As you know, the Board of Selectmen has requested that we get more updates from department heads. Today, we are getting an update on capital from town engineer Jeff Shea.
So, the First Selectman's office asked me to put together a quick snapshot of our capital improvement program. As you can see, it's pretty lengthy, over 50 projects that are active right now, and they're in various, obviously, states of progress. So, this basically just gives you a quick idea of what the spend-down has been on those projects. Some of them go back to fiscal year '13. Most of them are more current. So, I've listed the 16 projects were sort of the newest funding year that are actually fairly well along in terms of their progress. Beyond that, we have the 17 projects, and after that, the older projects are 13, 14, and 15 projects. So, I don't want to go into any detail tonight, but I just wanted to present this, answer any questions anybody has on any specific projects right now. I'd be glad to bring them up to speed.
No, so Jeff is available after you've had time to review that, if you want to call him.
Yeah, and certainly I can come back and answer any questions after I had a chance to look at the report.
This is something that used to be done back in 2009, and we're reintroducing the concept of getting department head reports. And so, I want to thank Jeff for his efforts. And as you can see, as you recall, this board, with the support of the Board of Finance, did authorize the hiring of a new assistant town engineer. And when you look at this list, it is clear why the need exists. So, I want to thank Jeff for putting this together. It is actually a very, it took a long time to put together, to coordinate that, and it gives us a good guideline going forward in terms of capital projects we may want in the future and what our town can handle in terms of staffing. Any questions for tonight? Jeff would be happy to come back and await your time and answer questions if you'd like. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, moving on. We have a motion to authorize the First Selectman to execute a contract with Northwest Revaluation Group, LLC, for the 2017 revaluation project subject to the approval of Town Council. We have a new recommendation. We'll start with that. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $3,548.7?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, going on to item B, which is the revaluation contract. That is changed. We have a new recommendation for you from the assessor David Gardner, and ask you to come up and speak to that. We did receive new information that has caused the assessor to change his recommendation, as I understand it.
Good evening. The bids are put out with due date of June 1. You have the summary of the bids. This revaluation was the low bid for both Option 1 and Option 1A. And there was, as I interviewed them, some difference between what they proposed to do and what I asked for. And I also had a concern, which they have since answered, that they have a lot of work, some good-sized projects in progress, and signed for next year. Those are well along for the current year. At least a couple of them are pretty well along. So, I'm less concerned with that. I think the recommendation for Northeast revaluation is still a good one for other reasons, but if the Board were to accept the low bid, I think it would be, in my best estimation, it would be safe to do that, and I don't have the concern with staffing that I had. There are some added values in the second low bid. As you see, there were three options. There was one with data mailers, which are questionnaires, one without, and then a second option that was to value certain specific properties. And Northeast did include some additional work on that. It is not included in the low bid. But so, my recommendation was for Northeast. If the Board feels that you'd rather go with municipal valuation as the low qualified bidder, I think you'd be fine to do that.
So, which is the low bid, just to clarify?
Municipal valuation.
And that is item 3 in your chart. Okay. So, would you like us to take a motion to approve municipal valuation?
I think that would be in order. I would say that if you do approve them, I would ask that you approve Option 1. I think it's a better value. The difference, again, was with sending out questionnaires to property owners. And for the difference in price, if we were to add it on to an option that didn't have that, we could spend almost as much.
And that's well, that's below what we did last time we did the revaluation.
Right. Actually, all three of those are below what we spent 10 years ago.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for David? May I have a motion to approve municipal valuation for the revaluation project subject to approval by Town Council?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Did I get that right, Dave?
That's fine.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item C. You have before you a motion to accept a donation in the amount of $2,467.20 from Stop &amp; Shop for the Feed a Friend program. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
With our sincere thanks, and we will send a thanking note to them. I appreciate that so many members of our community are willing to donate and contribute. That's part of what makes this community so wonderful. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. You have before you a motion for a referral pursuant to a Connecticut general statute, Section 824, potential sale of 23 Mountain Road to the Planning Commission. The town of Simsbury became the owner of the property located at 23 Mountain Road as a result of a tax foreclosure on the property in 2015. The sale is coming to you upon the recommendation of town staff in consultation with Town Council. Once the town is prepared to proceed with the sale, the town will retain the services of a real estate agent. The house is in disrepair, and the total appraised value of the house and lot is $101,445, with the lot comprising the bulk of the value at $73,332. Does anyone have any questions on this? May I have a motion to refer the proposed sale of 23 Mountain Road in tariff to the Planning Commission pursuant to CGS Section 8-24?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have before you a motion to refer pursuant to Connecticut general statute, Section 8-24, for approval of easements for 20 Hot Meadows Street to the Planning Commission. Simsbury Developers LLC, the developers of the property located at 20 Hot Meadows Street, are seeking easements from DOT and DEEP to permit installation of a sewer line to run from 20 Hot Meadows Street through DOT and DEEP own property to connect with an existing town of Simsbury Sewer Line at the recommendation of the Water Pollution Control Authority. Add as an alternative to a connection with the town of Avon Sewer Lines, which would necessitate an amendment to an intermunicipal sewer agreement between Simsbury and Avon. So, you can see, this is a fairly complicated transaction, but what we are doing tonight is simply the referral to Planning. It's not, we'll come back to us. We have Tom Roy here, who can answer any questions, and Council is here as well, and Mr. Cook will help coordinate this. Does anyone have any questions? At this point, it's just a referral, and Bob, it'll come back to the Board of Selectmen, right? May I have a motion to refer to the Planning Commission pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 8-24, the request of Simsbury Developers LLC, owner of 20 Hot Meadows Street, for approval of easements from the Department of Transportation and the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to facilitate sewer service for the development of 20 Hot Meadows Street?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have before you a motion to authorize purchase of streetlights. If you will recall, during the budget discussions on capital, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and the voters of Simsbury approved the purchase of streetlights for energy cost savings and better customer service. Because of the delayed referendum, new pricing needed to be negotiated, which Tom has successfully done, and this motion comes to you today as a result of those talks. The recommendation fits with the existing appropriation for the purchase under our capital projects and is essentially the original price of just a little above $750,000. Tom is here to answer any questions. Do you want to walk us through this very quickly? Can you come up to the mic just for...
We've been working on this for a number of years to get to this point, and really, what got the ball moving is the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities did a procurement in which case we were able to... did a procurement, in which case we were able to hire ESCO Energy. They had gone through a vetting process for us. I have Jack Hanley, who's a representative of ESCO, with us tonight, in case there are any specific questions. We've gone through the valuation with ESCO and Eversource, and oddly enough, it's a lot of work to determine exactly how many streetlights we have in town, to make sure that we know exactly what it is that we're going to buy before we go ahead and do that. It's 651 lights and 127 poles. The 127 poles are for the decorative lights, similar to what you would see along Iron Horse Boulevard. The lights, in most cases, are the Cobra Heads, which are mounted to poles, which are owned by either Eversource or AT&amp;T. The next component of this, at $239,000, would be as soon as we buy these lights, we're going to relamp them with energy-efficient LED bulbs. These energy-efficient LED bulbs have a ten-year warranty. They have a life expectancy of 18 to 20 years. They are significantly, significantly more energy efficient, which is going to result in an annual savings of roughly $100,000 a year. We will now be responsible for the maintenance of these lights. So if in the middle of the night, there's a car accident in one of our decorative poles, and we need to get it back up, we are going to be responsible for having an on-call contractor, who was procured as part of the CCM process, that we will call to do this work. We believe ultimately, in addition to saving money, this is actually going to allow us better resident service. Right now, when we have a report of a streetlight out, the calls come into Public Works, we go through a queuing system electronically and report it to Eversource. But we don't get that, that tieback to them, that if it's a problem more than complicated than a bulb, it may be weeks, or in some cases, months, for a particular streetlight to, to be repaired. And I think the first selectman could give you the examples of how frustrated residents come when they ask for a simple routine operation like a streetlight, and we're not able to accomplish it as well as we could if the town was managing the process directly.
All right. So this is basically an extension of the conversation we had during the budgeting process. The motion before you will be to approve the purchase of streetlights in the amount of $772,767, which include lighting along Iron Horse and the library parking lots. That will lead to 106, 526 annual savings. Do I have that right, Tom?
I, I think you would like to have it set that you're authorizing the first selectman to execute the necessary agreements with Eversource Energy for the procurement of the streetlights and poles from them with a value of $560,731. And then to allow the first selectman to enter into a contract not to exceed $304,269,000 with ESCO Energy for the relamping and the maintenance work associated with the first year of operations.
Yes. So I have that written down. We'll go through when we do the motions. We'll do it in that form, but the total amount is 770, right? Is that right?
Uh, no. The total amount is 865.
865. And what, will that be used for, Tom?
Uh, that's going to be used for the purchase of the lights, for the cost of the relamping. We are also going to receive roughly $63,000 in energy-saving rebates from Eversource. We're going to receive an additional $11,000 for relamping the parking lots along Iron Horse Boulevard, which we already own those lights, and also for the library parking lots.
And we get to 850 above the 772, how?
Um, that would be giving you room, in case we choose any of the options, which would be to go with self-reporting streetlights, where the streetlights actually can be built-in with the technology, where they would actually be able to report when they were about to fail. There's a number of technology options that we can add to these. I think that's a discussion that we should get into once we're under contract with ESCO. We've been working very closely with members of our Clean Energy Task Force on this, and I think one of the important things is in the selection of the actual LED lights. We would be working with them and the Board of Selectmen to make sure we pick the right lights for Simsbury.
Perfect. And the Board of Selectmen did approve capital budget, is the capital budget of 865,000, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay. So that is authorized through referendum, so we already have the approval to do this. So if there are no questions, I'll take two motions together. One, to authorize the first selectman to execute the necessary agreements with Eversource to purchase streetlights and poles with a value of $560,731, and to authorize the first selectman to enter into an agreement with ESCO Energy for the relamping and maintenance services of streetlights with a maximum value of $304,269,000, based on a capital budget approved of referendum at 865,000.
So moved.
Second. These will all be subject to approval by council. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
And I know there was talk of that price going up more significantly due to the referendum delay, so nice job negotiating that, staying close in the range, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will now move on to the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Charter Revision Commission. I, just one procedural point to make. The Board of Selectmen's rules, which, this is a Board of Selectmen meeting leading it, we do follow Robert's Rules of Order, which require decorum during our conversation and public audience. We waive the decorum requirement, but in our meeting, there is no name-calling, there is no questioning of motivations, there is no questioning of interest, there is, we keep a fairly structured thing. I think you all do that. We've watched all your meetings.
It sounds just like our meeting.
It does. So, but I do want to say, people always say, "Why do you permit a public audience name-calling and questioning of motivations?" Well, we waive that for the First Amendment. But once we get into the substance of our meetings, we do require the decorum that is outlined in Robert's Rules of Order. So with that, we will begin the discussion at our last meeting. The process is, I think Bob is here. Can you just come up and tell us the process? This is a very prescribed process. It's not sort of random or motivated by personal interest. There are opportunities for discussion, there are opportunities for referral, there are opportunities for decision, and then there are opportunities for votes. So, Bob, can you tell us where we are in the process?
At the last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, you referred the draft final report of the Charter Revision Commission back to the Charter Revision Commission. This is the first time the Charter Revision Commission has met. Therefore, as of tonight, the Charter Revision Commission has received the comments and issues back from the Board of Selectmen. So now, the Charter Revision Commission has 30 days to take action on the draft report and send back the final, its final report to the Board of Selectmen. The Charter Revision Commission can consider the issues raised by the Board of Selectmen, can make changes in accordance with those issues raised, or can decline to make changes recommended by the Board of Selectmen. This meeting you're having tonight is required by the statute, because the statute says the Charter Revision Commission and the Board of Selectmen shall confer over the recommended changes made by the Board of Selectmen. So as of tonight, you, the Charter Revision Commission has 30 days to send back its final report to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Selectmen has 15 days from the day it receives the final report to take action on the report. Accept it and send it on to referendum, or reject it.
And Bob, the Charter Revision Commission does not need to vote tonight?
No.
So they have until what?
Thirty days.
And what, when is that?
Well, tonight's July 11th. July has 31 days in it. So let's call it, so we don't, we always avoid counting the first day and the last day, so let's call it August 10th.
Okay. Thank you. So it's nice to understand the procedure.
Yes.
First of all, we want to welcome members of the Charter-
Just one other, one other deadline.
Yes.
Because if this matter does go to the ballot, it'll go to the ballot November 8th, which is the election. State statute requires that all local questions that will be on the ballot at the election, all proceedings must be complete and filed with the town clerk no less than 61 days prior to that election. So that date to keep in mind is, let's call it September 6th for that one. So the Board of Selectmen must, if the Board of Selectmen votes to send the final report and proposed revised charter on to the referendum ballot, you have to take that vote. That vote has to be complete by September 6th.
So I would just caution members of my board to please keep your schedules open. Between now and September 6th, there's a little likely need a special meeting. I just wanted to start by welcoming members of the Charter Revision Commission here, and to thank you for the work that you put forward. You handled it all in a very professional, thoughtful, careful manner, and we're very appreciative for the work you put in. We know it was a lot of hard hours, a lot of hard work, and I think our community is better because of the efforts you have put forward. And I just want to take a minute to go around the table and have members of the Charter Commission introduce themselves, and we'll start with Jeff.
Gentlemen.
Hadley Rose.
Melissa Osborne.
Paul Adolph.
Lydia Tadone.
Tom Bennekeam.
Bob Crowder.
Jim Murray.
Ed Pavage.
Very glad. Welcome, and we're glad you could be with us tonight. This is part of the process that is embedded in the Charter Commission review. This is by state statute, so we are following a very regimented process, and each step we take is, is part of the process. So at our last meeting, this Board of Selectmen raised a number of issues. Hadley, you were there, thank you for being there, and I think you had an opportunity to hear them, but they're also in our minutes, where we asked your committee to give us a little more information and background on the decision about the Economic Development Commission and the Culture Commission specifically. Why eliminate the Economic Development Commission from the Charter, but add a new committee to the Charter? Why not do both as an ordinance committee or an ad hoc committee? We thought that was interesting decision, and we wanted to hear more information on that. Mr. Askam, who could not be here tonight, had a particular interest in understanding the, a little more, the thinking about not combining planning and zoning, given that so many of our towns in the state do that. I think over 130, if I recall, is that right? Do that. So just wanted a little more information on the thinking process there. And then form of government, we had a specific question about compensation of the newly-created office of the first selectman of the town manager form tied to a percentage of the salary given. That would cause the sitting first selectman to have to recuse him or herself in any decisions. So it didn't make sense to us, or we had questions about why we would put something in the Charter that would necessitate someone sitting in that seat to recuse themselves. We also had a question about, we wanted to hear more from you on, because the report was a little bit sparse, on other forms of government, including chief operating officer, reporting to a first selectman as an alternative to town manager. And I think we also had questions as to whether you had conversations with town manager forms of government where it doesn't work. And finally, I believe that's it. Is there anything else?
I mentioned culture.
Yeah. Yeah. So I open it up to you guys to-
Which do you want to discuss first? Let's, I guess, we lack all the time. Do myself, do you really need yourself, or do you want to?
What, well, we did save that to the end, so why don't we start with Economic Development Commission?
And anybody who wants to come in, you can weigh in. I know this was brought up, a number of people felt that really was not functioning well in one way or another, that it really wasn't accomplishing, that the goal was just what was necessary for it to accomplish, and that we thought it would better serve to have the first select person. And that, and that's the focus on, that we need to face for the town in that area. It also felt, I think, in some ways, corrective to the law, that when it was necessary, oh, thank you, Tom, thank you, to, that the Board of Selectmen could in fact appoint special committees or ad hoc committees to deal with specific issues. For example, I guess Hartford would be a great example, or some other facility, where you really want to get somebody involved and do a committee specifically for that purpose. I think that was the general purpose, general thinking, I should say. Anybody want to kick in on that?
I think the only additional point was the amount of staff time that it took for EDC meetings.
I think that we also focused on the fact that the EDC term limit, uh, terms are five years long. It's a long, long, long time to ask somebody to volunteer their time and to be really actively engaged and participatory in that. And we really liked the flexibility idea of, and the Board of Selectmen has done this before. For instance, the, there's an Economic Development Task Force that recently put together this report that we've all been kind of working with over the last year, and some great work came out of that Development Task Force. It certainly seems like a, a shorter-term task force that was put together might bring in more talent, more opportunities for more people to be involved, who could only be involved on a shorter-term basis, because we have a lot of talent in the town.
So the other comments, though, were that, you know, people acknowledge that it could be done better, that economic development in this town is extremely important, much too large to be handled by just one commission. And so if we were going to take a look at economic development end to end, you know, how do we do it today? What are we doing to attract new businesses? What are we doing to service and retain existing businesses? And understanding that, and what should the role of EDC be, and what is the proper place for it? I mean, we just had a lot of questions about the whole function of it, such that if you voted to keep it in the Charter, then you just kind of maintain status quo. More importantly, we wanted to raise it as an extremely important issue, something that's very, very important. Simsbury, take a look at it, the full breadth of it, figure out the proper place. Should it be in the Charter? Should it be in ordinance? You know, that we really would ask the Board of Selectmen to take a look at that and ultimately determine what is the best place, what is the proper form of economic development within the town of Simsbury.
I think the upshot was that we wanted to elevate the importance of economic development in Simsbury by putting it with the first selectman, and by having additional opportunities for more people to be involved at, at the Board of Selectmen's pleasure.
Was it discussed at all changing the description in the Charter? For example, with the shorter terms, which I think is a very good point that might invigorate? Was there talk about leaving it in the Charter, but maybe redefining it a little differently?
I think-
Those are my thoughts.
Thanks for having us, and thanks for this dialogue. I think for us to go back, for me to go back and change my mind, it'd be important to hear something that we hadn't thought about in all these issues. So as much as we're telling you what we thought and making our decision, it'd be helpful for us to hear things that you hadn't, you know, that we hadn't considered. On the Economic Development Commission, I think the idea was, you heard that it was to elevate it, I think we wanted it to work in conjunction with the town leadership, not separate. So the way we thought it was working now, the EDC could take up at whatever issues they wanted to, whether the Board of Selectmen felt that that was what we should focus on. So by allowing it to be more flexible in an ordinance or by appointment, that, it was designed to give it more, Bob said, more stature, more focus. So you create the mission of the Economic Development Commission, and then send them off to do the work, rather than have them sit there and try to figure out what they wanted to work on as volunteers, not elected, not, you know, and, and so, you know, I, I'd be open to hearing some things about how we can make it work better, but because it's not in the Charter, doesn't mean it can't continue to do work. We just didn't think that, and I voted against it, so I, I thought it should have a role, but the more that I heard the conversation, you know, the more I probably would vote with the unanimous body, in that if we're going to have one, let's tighten up what it's going to do, and give it a purpose, and have it respond to the leadership, because the Board of Selectmen can provide staff support and can provide support for the commission, but if they go off and do something that the leadership doesn't think, they're still heating up a lot of time and staff support and, you know, so, I don't know if that's helpful, but that's sort of the background.
Does anyone? Yes.
I know on a personal level, I just found it odd that if you had an existing Economic Development Commission, why you would need to appoint an Economic Development Task Force? If you have a, a group of people who meet once a month for that purpose, to actually have to go outside that commission seemed rather odd to me. And to Mary's point, I watched the, the tape of your last meeting. In our sense, when we met, was that the EDC was a rudderless ship. And I think several of the Board of Selectmen members conceded that. Sean especially said that it's really our job to give the mission statement to the EDC. Chris Barnett was in the audience saying, "We're looking to you to tell us what to do." So I think you have this rudderless ship that is taking up staff time and resources, and it's not getting anywhere. But what struck me most personally was, why would you need a task force if you have an existing group of people?
Any other questions from the commission or comments? I open it up to members of the Board of Selectmen for follow-up questions?
I had one. One of the things you mentioned, Hadley, was that you would move the responsibility of the first selectman, but that was not your recommendation in the Charter. That is not in the Charter, as I read the Charter. Is that correct? Yeah.
So one of the things I would just say to that is, Tom and I actually looked into hiring an economic development person. That salary's about $150,000 to $200,000. And to put that in the position of the first selectman, who is getting really no pay and does not have the ability to direct staff under your recommendation, or to even speak with staff, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense. But it's not a recommendation of the Charter, so that would not impact, I think, the decision on whether to include it in the Charter or not. But that's the one comment I had.
Just a point of clarification, we, we said it should, should fall within the, the control of the town manager. And the town manager would-
the Town Manager, and the Town Manager would be responsible for economic development.
Okay, that's not what Mr. Hadley said. So I'd ask for clarification.
I don't remember it like that. I remember we were focusing, we wanted to make sure it was still a focal point for the town, that it was important, and by voting to eliminate the body, it didn't mean we weren't concerned about economic development, we certainly were, we just wanted to put the focus in a different area. I think one of the problems we run into with this whole recommendation is, some recommendations will kind of semi-negate other recommendations, you know, and always a vote, on one level we say, we say voted for the Town Manager, and that might, you know, imply such and such on another level. If it doesn't go, then it changes, changes the picture. So it's a little, it's a little tricky, which is why eventually we're throwing it to you.
I think, but actually, the way you've done it, the way you've done it makes a lot of sense, because you don't have to decide who should be doing economic development on the recommendations based on what you put forward to us, that could be a decision made at a later time. So I just point that out as a point of interest, people may not realize that to hire an Economic Development Coordinator, really other towns are paying between $150,000 and $200,000. So it's, and it's full-time with someone with tremendous amount of experience who has access to staff, so, to put it, with someone who has no pay and no access to staff, if it's important to this town, does not make a lot of sense to me. But again, that's not the decision we'd be making at this point. So-
Yeah, all of them. The comment on that, though, Lisa, is that, you know, other towns that have Town Managers and have a First Selectmen, and we heard from one, Kent, who is, I believe, on a fixed stipend, still was very proud of the work that he was able to do for economic development. And I think the last thing Simsbury needs is to add another full-time staffer at $145,000 a year.
Or $200,000.
And, or whatever. So if the Board of Selectmen chooses to have an ad hoc committee for EDC and charge it with things that, you know, the Board of Selectmen feel are missing now, that's certainly the prerogative of the Board of Selectmen to go ahead and do that.
And that would be permitted under your recommendation, so that, to me, that makes a lot of sense. It's not a recommendation in the Charter where to put economic development.
And whether, you know, the Charter goes Town Manager, as was voted by the Charter Commission, or, say it's rejected by the voters, it still gives you the opportunity to make the EDC a position or a commission by ordinance. It does not have to be in the Charter. That doesn't lessen it, it just means it's not a Charter position, and it gives the Board of Selectmen more flexibility over when what is required and when what is not required.
Thank you. Any other comments on the economic development?
I would just say, Lisa, that we didn't envision the appointment of a standalone economic development person. It was much more a thinking that if you relieved the First Select person of the obligation to run a town the size and magnitude of Simsbury, that he or she could be much more of an ear to the community, generate business contacts, take that to the Town Manager, who has the ability to formulate whether a plan can accomplish what that idea is. So that's what we envisioned, so when we started talking about move economic development over to the First Selectmen's office, it's much more as an ambassador, you know, to be the eyes and ears-
You're right, of course.
-of the public, and bring that to the professional Town Manager, who's either going to say, "We'll never have the money for that," or, "You know what, I think I have a way to get there." So that's what we envisioned. I mean, I would think everybody on the Board of Selectmen is, is part of an Economic Development Commission, everybody, because if you're not, you should be, because that's what you should be doing, is constantly open ears to what's going to make the town better economically and more viable. So that's the kind of the idea I thought.
Lisa, I just reviewed the final report that we sent you, and it jogged my memory that we were all pretty impressed with the West Hartford setup, that with both the mayor and the Town Manager came and spoke with us, and the way that they worked together, and that the mayor, who in our way of setting up what's what we call the First Selectmen here, completely unpaid position, a man who devoted a lot of time and a lot of hours to that volunteer position, but really had an integral role to play in the revitalization of the economic well-being of West Hartford.
And I don't disagree with that, I think that actually we have a very strong Board of Selectmen who does that already. The Economic Development is now housed in the office of the First Selectmen, and we've been initiating business visitations for the first time in many years, and have been working tremendously within town staff to pursue things. I think that anyone, whether it's First Selectmen or a member of the Board of Selectmen, does that, that's part of their job, that's how they're voted on, that's what everybody puts in their flyers when they run for office, to show what they're doing along these ends. I think everybody understands it's a goal, I'm not, I just wanted to clarify that you're not making that a responsibility. It's not a responsibility, Mr. Sifka, although he did it, because that's his job.
Right.
And we all do that, because that's our job. So that's the only clarification I'm making. All right, any other comments on the EDC? We'll move on to Culture Commission as to why you rec, did you have something to add to that, Mike?
My one comment is, I'm concerned, what I've heard tonight really clarified a lot of understanding the thoughts that came to us in their paperwork, their report. I am still concerned about taking EDC out of the Charter, because it appears as though we're giving it less emphasis. What I'm hearing is not that, and that makes me far happier. But I'm still a little concerned there, but I got to wrap my head around that. But thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Are we ready to move on? Does anyone have anything else on EDC? Okay, so now we'll move on to the Culture Commission. So this was an interesting recommendation, to separate Culture from Parks and Rec and create this as a Charter Committee. So we were just curious as to the contrast there and the thinking behind that.
I think the consensus was that people felt Culture was getting short shrift, being part of this larger organization, and that Culture being a kind of a significant issue for this town, you know, with the center and everything, that we wanted to give it a little specialized niche for itself and have people focus in that area. I think that was basically the thinking of it.
Was the thinking to sort of, because Culture, Parks and Rec is in the Charter, that this would then be an extension of it?
We have the Culture, Parks and Rec.
Yeah, that there would be a group that's, you know, focused specifically on that, and we felt that would be advantageous to the town, so.
And was there any discussion whether it would work as a ordinance committee or ad hoc, or no?
I don't know if we discussed it on that one, but just backing up a little, in almost a number of these recommendations could probably be accomplished by ordinance, and I think, Bob, you're back there somewhere? Something like this could be accomplished by ordinance as well.
Sure.
But we'd still need to take it out of the Charter, and then reestablish it by ordinance.
So you felt it was a recommendation to separate them as opposed to going back to Culture, Parks and Rec and say, "Hey, you guys aren't focusing on this."
Right.
I think, you know, I think that that's a valid point. We've done a lot of marketing studies, and one of the things the town excels at and that they have told us we should focus on is the arts and culture, that's one of our strengths, so it may, so that is a recommendation that makes some sense to me. In terms of the thinking, I was curious about why adding a Charter Commission, so. I open it up to members of the committee?
Yeah, one of the other comments that the proponent for this position was, was that it seems like the most recent agenda of their meetings of the joint group, well, they were overshadowed by Parks and Recs, and they didn't feel enough energy was going into the cultural side of the town, which is very diverse.
They also felt that a lot of the culture activities don't have anything to do with Parks and Rec, in the sense they're not tied to that particular park, so they needed something outside of thinking for the total concept of culture that the town is.
And I think also, back, also to add to both of your comments on that, was one of the speakers that did speak to us or before us, this is a way to garner more volunteers, in particular for the arts and culture within the town, you know, here we have the faculty, we have the point in arts, but also to dovetail onto that, there are those that have a specific interest in arts in the center, arts in the town, arts in Simsbury, cultures in Simsbury, so it's a way to also have these particular individuals who really would have more of a service, be involved in a separate organization or separate community in the culture.
I believe Culture, Parks and Rec did not object to this, as I understand it, or do we have any input from them?
Nobody, no objection to it.
Okay.
Lisa, I think we didn't look at it as adding another Charter Commission, what we looked at was splitting one Charter Commission into two, because they, they felt like two Commissions as it was, and we're just separating them. So it was not really adding, it was separating.
Okay. Anyone else from the Charter Revision Commission want to speak to this? I open it up to members of the Board of Selectmen. Any comments, questions?
Makes sense. Sean, it's a good thought.
I'm sorry that Mr. Ascom had a family emergency and couldn't be here, he had an interest in hearing more information about the decision not to combine Planning and Zoning. I think we know with the POCD coming up, there's a lot of work coming down, we certainly heard a lot of your considerations that you took, and there were numbers of, a number of people from the public who spoke to this, but we just wanted to, he in particular asked that, go back to you and try and get a better understanding of the thinking there, especially in light of how many towns do combine them, and with the recognition that there is a tremendous amount of pressure on staff time in terms of the number of meetings that they have.
Well, I know a number of citizens came before us recommending that, we keep them separate, they're much more comfortable with that, and I'm sure any number of you go to CCM meetings, and one of the big complaints you're always hearing at a CCM meeting is P&amp;Z Commissions do a lot of zoning and very little planning. And one of the reasons that we felt that this should stay separate was just for that reason. So you had a group that really focused in one area, and the only person, as I recall, and it might have been somebody else, who recommended combining them, was I believe a developer, who just felt, "Well, it'll make it a little easier if we appear, you know, just in front of the one group as opposed to two." And then the question was, "Well, why can't there be joint meetings for that?" And they're still only going for the same meeting, but you've got the two bodies together. And I think that was basically, we also did get a letter, I don't know if it was included in the report or not, from the Conservation Commission, which requested that we keep them separate. That's the basic-
What did the task force recommend? Did they make a recommendation on that or no?
Yes, they did. You're unanimous, unanimous to combine them.
Combine them, okay.
Yeah, that was one of a number of recommendations that they made, which I think just about all of those recommendations were either being considered for approval or had been approved, and the feeling was that, you know, despite the fact that it was there, we had heard enough that said we should really keep it separate.
Well, one of the things I think Simsbury takes great pride in is how we've developed this town, and it is in great thanks to the many volunteers who gave up their time and service to this community, including the Planning Commission was integral to the POCD, and so I can understand your thinking there, and trying to preserve what keeps Simsbury great. But I do want to open it up to members of the Board of Selectmen, since this was a request that came from our board, although the person who made the request is not here.
Well, I'll speak to it a little bit, having sat on the Planning Commission and been chairman. I do think Planning and zoning both do different functions. I can see an advantage, staff time-wise, because it is another meeting for staff and everything else, but it also would potentially speed up the developer's timeline, if you will. But I do know in the last number of years, I'll say five to six years, five to eight years, there has been a willingness on both zoning and planning's part to have a meeting to keep the process moving, so that there was not an impediment, as we all heard about in the past, there was an impediment to getting projects through. And I don't feel that that is the case anymore. I have one specific memory of a 17-minute meeting to address a developer's thing during August, and we were very proud that we were able to get it done in 17 minutes, even though I spent more time in my car than I did at the meeting, but that's okay, that's a good thing. So I don't think that's as big a problem as it has been in the past, and creating the POCD is a huge part of what Planning does, and it is something, a very different way, if you will, to look at development within the town, or potential development within the town or not, that they have to do versus what zoning does.
I think that's one of the points the task force did bring up, is that we should look for ways for the different land use boards to do combined meetings to expedite the approval process, or to coordinate them on days. So I know that's something that Mr. Rabbit is looking very closely at, and that they're making great strides in improving. So thank you for that comment, and your perspective as a member of the Planning Commission. Any other comments? Yeah?
I could just say, I believe the vote on this was nine, two. Just two of us voted in favor of combining, so, and we kind of made an arrangement, an agreement on this board, this Charter Revision Commission, that, you know, we would take a collective vote, and that was going to be the commission's recommendation on it. So I don't think nine to two is going to change too much, I'd say that.
Well, of those who voted to combine, would anyone like to give comments on your thinking on that?
Well, I was one of the two that was in favor of combining, and from my point of view, it was primarily an efficiency perspective, I mean, I'm reasonably certain that we would save on staff time, and it also expedites moving along the developer's proposal. So I felt that it just was more efficient, and I'm aware of the fact that there are a lot of towns and cities that have done that, and do that very successfully. On the other hand, I think we were sensitive to the chairpersons of both Commissions who came in and spoke, not passionately, but pretty strongly, to preserve what we now have. But from a pure efficiency point of view, both from town staff and from the point of view of the development community, which I did for many years in my career, it's much easier dealing with one commission than two.
I think, actually, you make a great point, one of the things about development in Simsbury, having to deal with two commissions, it does slow things down, but slowing things down is not always a bad thing, because you get things, yeah, you get sometimes a better product of having gone through. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
The new town planner also spoke and shared with us the statistics of how many towns combined, but he also made a comment that, you know, we can survive either way, but that there are a number of steps we could take as a town to get them to behave more as one. And I think hearing that from him, and even though I voted to have them be combined, but I think hearing that from him, said, "Yeah, there are some steps that can be taken for them to actually behave as one," in fact, if we can accomplish those and implement those things, and then that would start to address some of the concerns.
Any questions for members of the Board of Selectmen on this issue? All right, we will move on to form of government. We did have a couple questions, one of which was the compensation, the tying it to the salary of the Town Manager, there were concerns about having whoever is in the lead role as Chairman or First Selectman or whatever the title's going to be, would then have to recuse themselves, and those votes would be five, and that seems as that is a major component of the job if we're switching to Town Manager, did that raise some concerns for us? So-
Got to say, because I always want to raise that, so this isn't a concern about the stipend concept, it's just more how we wired it in here, and I do think it leads to a de facto conflict of interest for First Selectmen. So, a couple of options I would throw out is, the Charter could recommend that the stipend be no more than, set by the board, but no more than $15,000, or set by the board, no less than $10,000, no more than $15,000, or not have a specific dollar amount in there, but have a side recommendation that the initial salary be set at $15,000. And the conflict isn't just the salary, it's also when you do the annual reviews with the Town Manager, because there is a very strong compensation component to those reviews. So, I just thought if we could find wording that freed us up from that conflict, that would help.
Chris and Lisa, we didn't think about that, it's a great point.
It really is, never entered our minds.
Aren't you, you'll never get away from that conflict, though, no matter how you, how you structure the First Selectmen's compensation, because she, he or she will always have to recuse herself, or himself, right?
No, not if it's not tied to the Town Manager's salary. If the agreement is, we're going to give them $10,000, I think Chris's point, $10,000, if it's not tied to the Town-
So if, but then, if you adjust it, either way, however you want to do it, you will always be in a conflict situation, not to recuse yourself.
First of all, no one deserves this position, and I don't know that I would be re-elected or that I'd be running, but whoever is in that position could never vote on their salary, I don't do it now.
That's my point.
But, but, if it's tied to the Town Manager's, I could, that person, if it were me, could not vote on the Town Manager's salary.
No, I'm with you, I'm with you, I just didn't, I just wanted to make sure we talked-
Yes, absolutely.
And Jeff, I think you're purely right, I don't think we can completely eliminate the quote-unquote perceived conflict of interest, but I think this one was fairly tight, and if we can loosen it up, it provides a lot more running room for First Selectmen.
I understand, the only question I would have, that would be great, the first time you put it in the Charter. Five years down the road, salaries go up, you know, you would think the First Select Person's salary would also go up. At that point, you're going to run into the same conflict, if it's in the Charter like that.
That's the unintended consequence, that you have to, you have to, right, you're now, you would be opening up more discretion to the board, and you might not want to give the board that discretion, so that is absolutely-
So that is absolutely would be, and a consequence that you want to think through.
And the other alternative I would throw out there is much like the chairman of the Board of Education, give no salary, but have them submit for compensation of expenses. And those could be subject to board approval or town manager approval. That's, I think, how West Hartford does it, there's no salary. So if you're going to switch to the town council, I mean, one of the things I had, that struck me, is that you're continuing to call the office the first selectman, when in fact, this is a fairly radical shift to council manager form of government. And so, that made me uncomfortable to keep using the same words, as if it wasn't a major change, when in fact, it is a fairly major change. So that's one of the things I had. But one of the other specific questions we had raised is, what conversations did you have on chief operating officer as an alternative? I know they used that in Ridgefield, Darien. Elaine did a bunch of research on the towns that used that approach.
Yeah, there, I mean, there are a number of towns. I see, you know, you spoke to people from towns that are geographically close to us, but honestly, I don't think resemble Simsberry or a version of economically thriving Simsberry. I mean, Selectmen and representative town meeting forums, Fairfield, Darien, Guilford, Wilton, Ridgefield, Newtown, those towns have a lot more in common with us than Glastonbury or Avon. So, I was just wondering about any conversations you had with officials from towns like those who do still have a truly electorally accountable form of government, which, you know, as much as you leave the selectman tag in there, it is, as Lisa was just saying, it's a council manager, essentially.
Yeah.
And to give the impression that there's more electoral accountability there than there really is.
I actually, I had a discussion with Tom afterwards. We did not, for whatever reason, whether we couldn't find somebody at the time, or whatever it was, bring anybody in from towns who had that form of government. I had actually endeavored to get somebody from Westport up here, because I know the Westport people, which is a similar kind of town, but couldn't get anybody up here at that time, because the former first select person I wanted was away. One of the things, in order to address this issue, what I've discussed with Tom, is when we meet again, possibly bringing somebody in to give us a different perspective from another town. There's a town, I think, that went recently back to a selectman type of, recently back to 2002 or something. Okay, 2003.
There are more recent ones than that.
And possibly, you know, address those issues with them, and then as we come back to you, have more information on that when we make our proposal.
Also, in full disclosure, for some reason, this side of the table, we're the ones who voted against the town manager form of government, so I want to look over there.
It wasn't deliberate. But it was them against us.
But it was.
But I will, I will say, we did have a rather lengthy discussion around the idea of a chief administrative officer versus a town manager. That took up, I would think that probably took up most of one of our meetings, including having a draft of that type of position in the charter, so we reviewed it. So it wasn't like we didn't have lengthy discussions around that.
No, we're...
I believe that the feeling was that it just wasn't compatible for us to have a chief administrative officer, then have a first selectman that had more authority than we eventually came up with in the charter. So, it was something that we did have some discussions around. In the absence of, you know, having somebody come in from some of those towns, you know, we didn't look at, you know, some of those and had discussions around it. So I want to think that we didn't, you know, at least touch on that.
But what I may want to mention, that we have charters from several of the towns, both in hard copy plus we have the links. So, we were looking for, just like you were doing.
Correct. We've got Dariens right here.
Yeah, Dariens, there was a whole package initially that had those, which Tom has there, and he can read off the towns if he wants, but we did have lengthy discussions.
I will say that, though, just procedurally, the way it happened is that there was a motion put forward for a, I'm going to call it a hybrid form of government, with very specific proposed statutory language. And we took a vote on that specific statutory language, and that was voted down. No other alternate language was proposed for a hybrid form. No, no alternate motion for a chief operating officer while retaining the first selectman form of government was proposed. We went straight, and it's just procedurally how it happened. We went straight from discussing the hybrid into the town manager form of government. I mean, it was bing bang boom. And there's nothing wrong or inappropriate with that, it's just how it happened, and the town manager was proposed. A very conceptual motion was put forth about the town manager form of government, and it passed. So that's where we were, and that's where we moved forward from.
And was there specific language about the town manager?
Eventually, we, eventually, but not in, not in the...
So you didn't take a vote as to concepts on each one?
Correct.
One was specific and one was a concept.
Correct. But, you know, once we had a positive vote in favor of the town manager form of government, that's where we turned our attention. And no further ideas were discussed about other forms of government, because we had a motion that passed for the town manager form of government, and that's where I do delay to come up with the best product that we can come up with, given that vote in favor of a town manager.
It gave a good indication as to which way the board wanted to go, or the commission wanted to go.
Yeah.
So...
Great, yes.
I think instead of talking about the labels and what we call it, I think we should talk about the duties that we were moving toward. And, you know, town of Simsberry's been looking for professional, running the town professionally for longer than I was in office, so that's twenty-five years ago. And we've always been, we went from a first selectman who ran the day-to-day operations, and we've been on sort of a train moving toward adding more professional staff. And when we had this discussion, it was, how far do we want to go to make sure that the town's protected and still have accountability? So that's what we were all wrestling with. And whether you call it a town manager, chief administrative officer, chief operating officer, I think we were trying to get to the right place of what's in the best interest of the people at Simsberry. Do we want, and do we think we can hire someone and pay them enough to run the day-to-day operations of the town? Because if you want to stay with the first selectman, you've got to pay him a hell of a lot more than we're paying now, or we've ever paid. As you said, you know, you can't get an economic development person for less than two hundred thousand.
Well, my salary was cut to seventy-five thousand.
I know.
I think she heard rumors about that.
You know, I, having done the job, Lisa, you know, this isn't about who sits in that job. It's the fact, it's a tough job, as you know. And to have somebody come in every two years, get elected, and run the day-to-day operations, we felt it was very difficult for the town to survive that, and for to find the right person. And sometimes we can, and sometimes we can't. So the question was, how much professional staff do we want to hire to do the day-to-day operations and still have the accountability? Do we want someone who could, do we want our first selectman to administer the day-to-day contracts and know all the things that we know to administrate laws and contracts? Or do we want to put those duties in the hands of a professional that can do that work, much like a superintendent? I think we often had conversations about, you know, the Board of Ed is the policymakers, the superintendent runs the Board of Ed. So we often look to those conversations, you know, how far do we want to go to make sure the town's protected, to make sure that the town has professional managers, to make sure the town has, you know, a town plan? You know, a first selectman wouldn't do that job, he'd need professionals. So, our conversation was more on a continuum of, how far do we have to go to keep that accountability and to protect the town going forward? Because it's complicated to run a community and complicated with laws. And so that's the conversation we're continuing to have, and that's the conversation that we'd like to hear from the Board of Selectmen. You know, how far do we have to go? You know, we had some conversations, I think Paul suggested, we go back to the day where first selectman was actually the hands-on person who ran the day-to-day. And I don't think any of us felt...
No, I don't think that was...
Well, there was some...
I sort of came up with the hybrid, Mary.
He's here to speak for himself. He's here to speak for himself.
It was in the meetings, however, it's on that, I agree with it.
I guess we would say, then we agree, you know, going back to the way it was is not something we feel comfortable doing. So we know we're not...
I think I said, nobody wanted to go back to that.
Did you?
I believe so.
Yeah, I said that. I said you wanted to go back to the way it was.
No, I said nobody.
Nobody, nobody. So you agree?
I'm not quite sure which one.
I haven't used my lawyer skills in a while.
Nice try, though, Mary.
Anyway, so I guess it would be helpful, on that continuum, you know, whether we call it, we can decide what model fits best. But how far do we as a community feel we have to go in hiring professionals and protecting the town from what we think we need to protect the town from, which is to have the right professionals in the place to do some things, and not everything? And how far do we want to go to allow someone to still be elected and still, you know, have the capability to do the work? I think that's why we put a salary level in there. We didn't want the Board of Selectmen, because the Board of Selectmen, we know, has control over salary. We didn't want them to pay them nothing, because we thought that was important. And no matter what the first selectman does for the town of Simsberry, this town should pay someone to do that work. We felt it was hard work, it was good work, and we wanted to encourage more people to run for that office. So, I don't know if that helps the conversation, but I'll ask my colleagues here...
You have a thing you write, you mentioned first selectman, why do we keep that name? One of the things is that we still see the first selectman as the elected voice of the people, or they're still a voted person for that, they're the elected person. So we want to make sure we didn't make any aspirations that something's changed in that particular position.
Except that everything has changed in that particular position. So, I mean, we do that with the Board of Ed, that's seventy-five percent of the town's budget. So, that's the majority of the town's budget. We just, nobody runs for chairman of the Board of Ed, they're elected by the board. And the reason for that is you have no directive authority, no executive authority, you're simply a policymaking decision. As I understand it, that's the recommendation of this commission. To the extent, I keep hearing, we want it to be like the Board of Education, so I just raise a couple of questions if that's the case. Why didn't you consider four-year terms?
We didn't say that. We had this go.
I think someone said it in public audience, but I don't think it was in the...
But it is a fact, what is the difference? There are policymaking board, you're recommending a policymaking board for the Board of Selectmen.
Because the first selectman, the first selectman is actually an elected position by the voters, whereas the chairman of the Board of Ed is selected from among the members.
But my question is, why would you do it differently if they're both the policymaking boards of the different areas of government?
Well, I think the feeling was that of the members, but again, speak here, was that that led to, number one, more representation. You had a person who specifically wanted to be the first selectman, could donate the time to do that position, be a representative for the community, to other organizations such as C C M or at the State House, and, you know, be the person who would work with the Board of Selectmen to help set policy. So I think from my recollection, that's why we went in that direction.
I'd also add to that, is that then you're setting up that not only is that first selectman no longer the, let me back up, now the town manager, whatever we're going to call him or her, is not directly accountable to the voters, but now you are not having the chair or the head of your executive branch then essentially accountable to the voters, that he or she is being voted upon by their peers. And that, well, for me specifically, that's a very concerning area to go.
Except we're there at the Board of Education, which is seventy-five percent of the town's budget.
Well, that's absolutely true, but that's not the head executive branch of your town.
And they're not the legislative branch.
Yeah.
But they are the legislative branch of the Board of Education.
Theoretically, yes.
We should look at the Board of Ed.
Well, I mean, that, some of these things I just found inconsistencies, because, you know, why not do a four-year elected term if we're switching to the council town manager form?
I think actually, the four-year term was, we felt was more relevant if we kept a stronger Board of Selectmen, because this way you'd give the people the opportunity to grow into the role, as opposed to dealing with the problem of having somebody in for two years, maybe getting a new person in another two years. And by the time they got their feet wet and really knew what was going on, it was time to run again.
We also expressly did not want a four-year term when there's a town manager in there. We wanted to have at least some accountability through a two-year election on the Board of Selectmen. If the voters want to get rid of a town manager, and the Board of Selectmen isn't doing it, and they're there for four years, the voters have zero chance of getting rid of that town manager.
The towns are trying to get it.
I can tell you the exact reasons why. Two reasons. One was to ease into the town manager form of government, and the second was to make the Board of Selectmen accountable for the hire. So with a two-year term, if the town doesn't like the direction that the town is going in, they can vote to the board by either telling them, get rid of that town manager, or change the direction, or we'll vote you out. And that's the accountability part that sometimes gets glossed over here. And one of the, one of the arguments against a professional town manager is, I don't know who said this, but it's government by profession instead of government by the people. Well, that's quite an overstatement. It's really, if the Board of Selectmen can't get the major hire right, hiring a good town manager, they're not a very good Board of Selectmen. So, that's the reason why the two-year term, was to ease into the town manager, and also to make sure there was a mechanism for the voters to weigh in every two years on how the town manager was doing.
Question, now, why would that reasoning not apply to the Board of Education, which is the majority of the town's budget?
Our charter, our charge to our commission was not to do anything with the Board of Education, and we didn't.
But that's not my question. The question is, why wouldn't bad logic apply?
I think it's a different, it's a totally different answer. The Board of Education doesn't govern the town.
It does govern education, which is seventy-five percent of the town's budget.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, because it is seventy-five percent of the budget, and we have two members of the Board of Ed right here, do you guys find the public giving pressure for, to replace a superintendent when the budget goes up? No. So, what's the likelihood of a Board of Selectmen getting pressure to replace a town manager who's perhaps not doing well? You're not seeing that already in a bigger chunk of the budget?
Okay, let me take that back. It depends. When there are certain times, especially during budget time, we'll have members in the public that will come up with a number of things in the end of the budget. But we, as in our roles, we are the, we really have only three directives by state statute, hire superintendent, craft a budget, and set policy. And we stick within those parameters of those three areas. We use the board's responsibility in terms of superintendent. And I will speak for this board, being the longest-serving member on this board, and having only three superintendents in my twenty-plus-year tenure on this board, it's because of the relationships that we have between board members and between board and superintendent. That has run the school district to what the school district is. So I think in terms of that, not confusing the Board of Selectmen's duties and parameters and the Board of Education is very different. It is a different, a different...
I just feel, it speaks to this expectation that the Board of Selectmen would be keeping the town manager accountable through the Board of Selectmen's electoral accountability, because it, I don't think it tends to play out when you have a bureaucrat.
So, can I ask you a question? Is your point that you think the Board of Selectmen, under a town manager form of government, should not have a first selectman elected by the, directly by the people, but among their, among themselves?
I think it's something to consider, because what you are doing is effectively changing it to the other commissions like zoning, planning, you don't elect those, they're selected by, you know, I'm not saying that I'm necessarily in favor of this recommendation, but if that is the recommendation to go to council town manager, I don't think we should be disingenuous with the people, and we should consider, well, if we're doing this, let's do it.
There are, I'm sorry, just one point. There are towns that have it that way, okay? And I don't recall every discussion that we had, but I think that idea was talked around at least minimally, and we decided not to want to do that.
I think that really to characterize it as disingenuous is not an accurate reflection of the work we did, or the conversations, or the collaboration that our commission did. I think that what we really strove to do is to say, okay, we're going to have a town manager form of government, what is best for Simsberry? We didn't allow ourselves to be put into a box by what other towns did, or by what other towns called themselves. We're Simsberry, we work together to come up with the very best arrangement we could under a town manager form of government for Simsberry. And we didn't concern ourselves with labels, we didn't concern ourselves with whether other towns did it this way or that way. We decided from our collective efforts what was best here. Do I think we should go to a town manager form of government? No, I don't. But I think that through all of our efforts, we came up with what we all thought was the best thing under that recommendation. So I think it really does reflect the genuine effort and honest commitment of every commission member to do the very best by Simsberry, and not, we're not hiding anything, we're not being disingenuous, we're putting forth the best product we can under the recommend, under the positive vote for a town manager form of government, which I voted against.
Which, which actually the four of us.
We all voted against Simsbury. Look at that.
Just reacting to a few things, having been on both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, I do look at the Board of Education as a town manager form of government. Purely town manager form of government. Secondly, never felt there was any less pressure from the public to push for excellence on the Board of Ed as I've ever felt on the Board of Selectmen, or to hold people accountable on the Board of Ed as I've felt on the Board of Selectmen. So I've never felt that that commitment to excellence and accountability is different. All I would say is, there are town manager forms of government with several towns, but the subtleties are different from one town to the next. And yes, the Board of Ed is a town manager form of government, but it doesn't mean that this proposal has to mimic it. And I personally understood the direction that the Charter Revision Commission was going in terms of what they were trying to do with an elected first selectman and the way they had that structured. So, so I would just share those thoughts with the group.
Any other comments? Mike, we haven't heard from you.
I think that if we go with a town manager form of government, or some kind of hybrid, depending on what actually comes out of the vote this fall, I'm expecting us to go to the citizens to vote on this fall. I think having the Board of Selectmen be on a two-year cycle to, Mr. Bennecke's point is, is spot on. We should be held accountable. And if we get it wrong, better be looking for another job. And, and I truly believe that. I've dealt with a number of different towns through the years. Some had wonderful town managers. Some had less than wonderful town managers. It is all in the hire. And it's going to be, that's one of the devils in the detail that we talked about at our last meeting, about the actual timing of all of this, and the potential of, in theory, six brand-new selectmen with a town manager having already been hired by the previous Board of Selectmen. And hopefully that continues through. That is one of my concerns in the back of my mind, but we've got to get there first before I get all paranoid and wiggy about that. I still may be paranoid, but that's a different discussion. But, but I do think it's, it's very interesting to hear your comments. Now, even though I watch the tapes, it's a whole different flavor to have, we're probably in the same room together, and I do appreciate that.
One of the comments, questions I had is Section 411, direction to employees with the change to town manager. It says, "No members of the Board of Selectmen, except the first selectman, shall give orders either publicly or privately to any administrative officer or employees," as defined in Sections 503 and 701. This would change, obviously the board could give direction, not individuals, to the town manager. But if we're keeping in language on that, why wouldn't you add language to the Board of Education or the Board of Finance or other boards? Why would you single out the Board of Selectmen?
Melissa, I appreciate you coming back to the Board of Education, but our charge, as Tom said, was to look at the town form of government. It was not to look at the Board of Education. And again, going to what Melissa, it's, it's, I want to reiterate that it was not disingenuous. It was not, we were focused on the task at hand, looking at the town form of government.
I apologize for using the word disingenuous. I meant that it might be misinterpreted by the public as keeping an existing form of government, which we are not. And perhaps it won't be. But my point to this section is, why, why not eliminate that if we're switching the town of government? We don't put it in for the Board of Education or the Board of Finance. Why would you keep it in?
I'm going to ask the two Board of Ed people here. Is that something that actually occurs? Is that something that's in, do we, does the town dictate that, or is that part of the state charter? Were the state regulations on that? In terms of who's directing the employees?
I think it's actually.
I don't think that's.
It hits Board of Finance more than.
Oh, no, it's at anyone.
No, but you, for example, the Board of, you're suggesting that if it's only the, that the rest of the board just no longer gives direction to the employees. I don't think the Board of Education gives direction to the employees at all. It all comes from the superintendent.
But that's what the change of government would be. So why would we need this language in there?
I think, I was just gonna say, I think we're looking for a conspiracy where there wasn't one. I really think that this is, this was in ease. So the town, the town manager is seen as, you know, has, he's, he or she doesn't have 15 people coming at him or her at any one time. It was, it was, it was a chain of command, you know, efficiency discussion. So you gotta tell me.
I think there's another.
You guys talk about.
We do the, we do the town manager, CEO of the town. We do the Board of Selectmen as the, as the board. And the head of the board is the first select. So the business, you got the, you got a board, you got a chairman of the board, and you got a CEO who runs the day-to-day operations. We have the town manager as CEO. We have the, have the board here, the chairman of the board is the first select. That's how we view it.
I think there's another history to this. The current charter has the, basically the same statement saying that only the first selectman can interact with employees, which is totally appropriate, because the first selectman is the chief administrative officer. With the new charter switching to the chief legislative office, they fall into that category. But only, on the Board of Ed, whether it's formally written down or not, the expectation is very clear. You don't go and direct employees. You do that through the chief administrative officer.
Oh, I agree with, and I actually agree with the concept. The question is, why would you single out one board when that's the common?
I think, Lisa, it's, you're giving us more credit, actually, than, than we're due. I think the fact is that we changed the town manager form of government, and we did not take that next step to go take a look at how it was worked for the Board of Finance or how it was worked for the Board of Ed. And if that's something that you'd like us to do, I think we can certainly do that at our next meeting. And we can, at that time, take a look at it and see if we think there, there needs to be an appropriate change or not. But I, I think that you're giving us, you know, we didn't, we didn't plan that.
Can I ask you a question here? So the primary issue is around the first selectman giving direction to the town employees? Or do I have it the other way around?
No. That, my only question was, why, if we're changing the form of government, why aren't we changing other aspects of the charter? If we're making it more.
Well, I think we looked at, to try to make it fit as best as, as possible. And step back, the main issue, which has been before this town numerous times, has been a town manager form of government. And that's one of the things that we looked at. You know, not everybody agreed. It was, it was a seven-four decision. However, the primary issue is the town manager form of government. And so if we're going to go through, you know, and we thought we did, went through every line, looked at what was relevant versus things that are just trying to, you know, look at, you know, small, relatively small things. And the feeling is, if mistakes were made, or things down the road wanted to be changed, five years from now, you got another Charter Revision Commission, okay? And then you refine it more. But the big issue is, does the town of Simsbury want a town manager or not? And that's what we're bringing forth. We have 18, 19 meetings, including, you know, two public hearings, plus one with, with the Board of Selectmen. So that's really the issue, is, does the town of Simsbury want a town manager? And then, you know, down the road, if we need to make changes on certain things, we can. Directing town staff, who directs town staff? You know, I was chairman of the Board of Finance for, for a long time. I think the only major interaction I had was with the, the finance director, who the Board of Finance has the right to, in conjunction with, in consultation with the first selectman, to either hire or dismiss. That's it. I mean, it would, I wouldn't call somebody up and say, I want you to do this. And if a member of the Board of Finance did that, they would have been reprimanded right away by the first selectman, I'm sure.
Well, absolutely. The question is, why?
You know, so, you know, if you, if you want us to look at that. But we didn't go into all the other boards. You saw what we did. Economic Development, Cultural Parks and Rec, splitting that up, and Pining and Zoning. Those are the major things that needed to be done. The rest of it, the town's running pretty well. And I think, you know, what you have before you, even though I wasn't in agreement with it, I still think is a very good document prepared by the other members on this commission with consultation with, with, with Bob DiCrescenzo, Tom Cook, and others. So.
Paul, I just want to add one thing to that. One of the, one of our charges was to look at all the commissions, look at all the boards. And we did touch on the idea of the Board of Education, since it's brought up a number of times tonight. And there, there were some lively discussions with members of the public regarding the Board of Education, how people are appointed, elected, whatever you want to call it, and how many people we have on the Board of Education. And what we really felt was that, since we came to the decision to recommend a town manager form of government, that had been our main charge. The other, the other inquiries were truly ancillary to our main charge, which was to, to address the town manager form of government, or the proper form of town government for Simsbury. And this recommendation to go with the town manager is a, it's a sea change. It is a huge change for Simsbury. And a lot of people aren't aware of it yet, and a lot of people don't understand what a big change this will be for Simsbury. But we really, truly felt that this was such a large issue, that this was one change, one huge change like this at a time was enough. And that's, that's where we really wanted our efforts and our, and the public's energy and effort to be focused.
I just wanted to ask Bob if the, the charter, the direction of staff issues, the practicalities could simply be addressed with job descriptions? I mean, I, the example of the Board of Finance that Paul brought up is, is relevant. I know, you know, Sean has done a lot of work with the chair of the Board of Finance. But I, are we, I'm assuming we're not looking at a world where every time the Board of Selectmen meets, they take a vote to direct the town manager, to direct the executive secretary, to prepare the materials for the next Board of Selectmen, because the first selectman can't do it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it on? Yeah.
What was the question?
I was just wondering if the, the little practicalities of the feature in the charter limiting direction of staff could be easily worked around with establishing job descriptions. There are certain responsibilities still held by the first selectman and the Board of Selectmen in the new proposed charter, which will require some staff assistance. And my only concern about that is, is the Board of Selectmen really going to vote at every single meeting to tell the town manager to tell the following people to do the following routine things for the next meeting? Because to purely take that, that would be what would have to happen. And that is kind of a pain in the neck.
Section 412, direction to employees, is within the chapter, proposed chapter, defining the powers and duties of the Board of Selectmen and the first selectman, or first selectwoman. The, it's short section. It says, "No members of the Board of Selectmen, including the first selectman or first selectwoman, shall give orders either publicly or privately to any administrative officer or employee, as defined by Sections 503 and 701 of this charter." 503 is that section that defines the, 701 defines the town officers. And they are the, essentially the directors. What this is intended to do is to mimic what the current exist, situation is, where the chief executive officer is the only employee that can give direction to town directors. And other employees established in, in, in Chapter 7. And there's a specific list of town officers and departments in Chapter 7. The Charter Revision Commission could change that in any way that they choose, and ordinances or resolutions could be adopted by the Board of Selectmen under this proposed charter if it were adopted, as long as it's consistent with the charter. Section, the Section 412 doesn't have to read the way it reads now. It could be changed substantively to allow for some direction to be given by the first selectman to whatever enumerated officers were set out. The, the draft you have, though, essentially takes the functions, chief executive functions on the existing charter, and shifts them from the first selectman to a new town manager. That's essentially what this does, with leaving everything else in place, including the commission form of government that really is captured in the existing charter. There are many commissions that have input into hiring of directors. Board of Finance, Cultural Parks and Rec, and Police Commission are three clear examples of that. None of that was changed. The Charter Revision Commission, I believe, felt that, as I stated earlier, one major change in this proposed charter was probably enough at this time, and understanding it could be revisited down the road.
The potential solution to this also, and I assume this is how it operates in practice today, is to, you know, say, you know, the first selectman or his or her designated name. So if you get into like a work group situation, the first selectman or whatever we call that, that position, say, you know, the lady is, is, you know, heading whatever group, and, you know, she's on work with the staff on this, which is on this project. In fact, I would think that that would potentially solve this, which was suggested.
No. Bob, I think Jeff raises a good point. With task force, oftentimes, we have Board of Selectmen work with different department heads. And that's permitted under the current form, but maybe we need language with that address, or you don't need?
I don't, I don't think you do. I think, you know, we're all, many of us, let's assume all of us are familiar with working with town managers in various capacities. And, you know, every town that has a town manager has a task force at one time or another. And the town manager assigns a staff person to that task force, understanding that the task force will give suggestions, recommendations to the assigned staff person. But it's a, staff person is really technically a delegate of the town manager, and the same thing would happen here. What this is intended to do, and this is really pretty standard language, is to make it clear that the legislative body, whether Board of Selectmen, Town Council, whatever, cannot give direction to town officers that are under the direct supervision and control of the chief executive officer. Understanding that municipal government, there's a very wide-open organizational structure. And, you know, there's lots of times when different commissions or task forces will meet with the Director of Public Works, or, you know, Board of Assessment Appeals meets with the Tax Assessor. And, you know, there's a lot of interaction between boards and commissions and task forces and, and town staff. There has to be to, to perform the municipal function. But certainly, the Charter Revision Commission could revisit this Section 412 if it chose to and draft it any way they choose.
I would say, Bob, we'll, we'll probably never do that. Because I think we were hell-bent on making sure that if we went to a professional town manager, he or she actually ran the town. And the moment that you start deviating away from, well, let's let the first select person have these responsibilities, then you're right into a de facto hybrid, which we felt was, was just not the right direction for the town to go. And I think Mary actually set the table nicely, and we did, we failed as a group to follow up on it. When she talked about the trend that this town has been going towards professional management by adding professional staff. So although I agree with Melissa that it is a big sea change, it's really not. Because I think I described it in one meeting, is we've been here, 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 and all we've got to do is hire a town manager, and we've done. And the reason why I felt very strongly about the town manager was, I'm a human nature person, common sense person. And if you keep hiring professional staff, he or she has a master's of public administration, and his or her goal is to run a town. But they're always going to report to an elected person every two years. They're going to leave, which I think is happening in this town and has happened for the last dozen years. So not only do I think that it's the best move for the town, and there's no comment on how the town's being run now or how it's been run in the past. The towns are doing great. I'm much more concerned about, how many opportunities are we going to forego by not bringing in a professional town manager 10 years from now? Because we have to, we have to be adaptive. We have to be flexible. And you need a professional, in my view, to run the day-to-day operation, and then elect a dynamic first select person, and have the Board of Selectmen be the policy drivers, and, and have the long-term vision, and have the professional town manager be the one to put it all together. Mike made a point about continuity. Every two years, the Board of Selectmen theoretically could change all six seats. That's the beauty of the town manager. It's not going to be disrupted to how the town is run, because you have a professional town manager there who's not going to change every two years. That's one of the biggest arguments for a town manager, is that it's continuity. That person is there. That person hires the professional staff. All the professional staff know who they work for. There's no blurred lines. And what you have here is our best attempt to make sure there were no blurred lines. Blurred lines is going to be the death of the effectiveness of this. And he or she can cultivate a professional staff that will want to be here. And the professional town manager's whole goal will be to make this the best town possible, because that's how he or she's going to be compensated. So that's his or her long-term employment aspects. So that's, but I wanted to go back to your point on continuity, because it's a nice segue into why the town manager works, and to Mary's point, which is, it's not quite the sea change that we make it out to be. Because we basically have a bunch of professional talent, professional management people in place, we're just now finally cutting the cord, and just saying, you know what? It's probably not the best business practices to have a professionally educated person report to someone who may be a lawyer, may be a flower store owner, may be a post office carrier, and report to that person. I'm not sure that's the best way to be effective on the running of the day-to-day operation of the town. So that's my points on those two issues.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a closing point. I feel like we're ready to close anyway. You know, I'm stating the obvious, but everybody around this table is going to have a vote in our respective roles. But, you know, philosophically, you really have to weigh the votes. The three former first selectwomen who are the most qualified to make that call all support the town manager concept. And I think that you owe it to them to see that this goes to the public vote. We really should not deny that opportunity, let the public make their call.
No, I got to say something.
You take it all back.
Thank you for that. You know, I think this is not an easy decision, and I don't know how the voters would vote. You know, we all spent a lot of time wrestling with what's best for the town, and I know everybody here wants what's best for the town. You know, I think what we are looking at is, you know, we have to roll the dice and hope we get somebody who's elected who has the ability to review contracts. So I think of it this way, you know, and I wasn't sure how far we were going to go. But let's say, when I started, and when Anita started, and when Peggy Schenk started, you know, the first selectman would go out and find the plow drivers, sign the contract, you know, hire the person to go plow the road, sometimes in some cases would plow the road. And we've gotten to a point now where, you know, isn't the legislative body to say, let's go build a bike trail, and authorize the funds to build those bike trails? But isn't the first selectman who actually has to review the contract and sign the contract to build a bike trail? Because that's what we have now. And we felt like, you know, sometimes you get someone with those qualifications, sometimes you don't. I think it was significant when the reduction, the salary of the first selectman was reduced, that it would be harder to find someone who had the capacity to be able to review a contract and sign it. And for me, keeping me up at night was, what if we have the authority in a first selectman who doesn't have the capacity and the skills to do that? What are we exposing to town? What kind of risk are we exposing to town? So for me, it's, do we want our chief elected official to be all things to all people, run a town, never having had experience? I mean, I didn't. I, you know, thankful or sorry the town gave me the opportunity to run town. You know, but I had legal skills, and I was fortunate to be able to hire good people to come and work for me, just as you are doing now, Lisa. So the question is, you know, can we, I think we came back to our first conversation, can we really pay somebody $75,000 a year, get all the skills that we're going to need when we pay a superintendent, I don't know, $200,000, $250,000? I don't know what Simmsbury pays the superintendent. But really, are we willing to pay somebody $75,000 to run our town? Do we really think that little of our town, that we can't get the best and pay the best? And so I think that's kind of what the town manager was designed to get us to. Do we need to go all the way to town manager? You know, I mean, we, the majority of us did. I felt, maybe I would rather not go all the way to town manager, but I certainly didn't want to go all the way back to when I started, which was, it was my job at night to read contracts and sign contracts. And we have instances where things were done wrong, and exposed the town to legal, you know, when I came into office, we forgot to do things as a town that a professional would have done, and we had to pay back wages. And, I mean, there was real exposure to towns. So, thank you for the compliment of making, you know, I'm just one vote, but I think we need to think, we love this town, we want the best for our citizens. Do our citizens know that when they elect a first selectman right now, that first selectman's actually turning the lights on at night, and reviewing contracts, and doing all the things that other towns have someone who is trained to do that?
I would just point out, we actually have Town Council here who reviews all the contracts, and that's my charter.
But that's your choice. No, it's actually my charter. Not really, no. I think, I've seen it where town contracts were not reviewed by Town Council.
And he's still our Town Council?
Before he was our Town Council.
You've been a Town Council for 20 years.
My point is, there's a tremendous amount of power put in the office of the first selectman right now. And as we've had these conversations, as Paula said, over the years, we started seeing that we didn't really want to put all of that obligation to an elected person. We wanted, and we started to pull some of that out and assign it to different people. We found that was working well for us. We were able to attract good people to do those things. So how much, you know, again, it's philosophical. How much of those responsibilities do you want to pull out and assign to someone who can do those jobs, who's hired professionally to do those jobs? And how much do we want to keep with an elected official? Because we all felt that was really important to keep.
I'd just add to the, one thing I do want to say, we're going to disagree, and we already have. And it's okay to respectfully disagree, because I think, to your point, the difference is not, in some ways it's huge, in some ways it's not. At the end of the day, it is going to depend on, one, who we elect. You can elect someone who's a professional, who is training as a lawyer, or a businessman, or a master of public policy. That can be one of the considerations you look at when you cast your vote. Or you can hire a town manager. You can hire a great one, or you can end up like Flint, Michigan. They had a town manager. So it's going to depend on, one, who we elect, and, two, who we hire, whatever form of government we have. I agree with Mary, we don't want to go back, and in fact, I was chairman of personnel when we made most of those decisions. The question sort of comes down to me on the continuum is, what, it's not just how we want to be governed, but how do we want to govern? Small-town democracy has been the birthplace of American democracy. This is where American values started. It's where you can make a difference as an individual in a small town. You know, Chris says, I'm in grieving, and perhaps I am, for democracy. As we look at, when we think we need to hire professionals to run, you know, do we need a professional at the national level? I don't know. You look at the election going on, maybe we do. Maybe we shouldn't be electing people for president. Maybe we do need a, you know, to hire a technocrat, or an autocrat, or bureaucrat to do it, because maybe that would be better off. But there is a grieving in this for me, as I look at some of these considerations, when we talk about professional, it's very, and when I think of democracy, I think, yeah, it is about the administrative process of running the town, and it has to be protected, which is why as chairman of personnel, I supported many of these moves. But it's also about community values, creating community, loving your community, having passion for your community. And it's about democracy, and where we want to see our democracy. Now, when you say it's sort of, no, you can do it both ways. When you think of the council forum who's advising the town manager, perhaps they're the policymaker, and there are many, I guess there are businesses where they have the COO who reports to a board. But there are also many companies where you have a COO who reports to a CEO who reports to a board. So there are different variations of that, and it's what you're looking for in terms of leadership and vision, and where you want to place that on the continuum. So do I think it's going to be catastrophic whichever way we land? I do not. Is there a little bit of grieving for democracy, in small-town New England democracy, on my part? Absolutely. When I heard this, I started to grieve, because I think we're losing a little bit of what has moved me so profoundly in Simmsbury. But I understand that, you know, I don't think the recommendation that you made is crazy. I see the logic in it. I think, you know, when we think of town government, when we do or not, the thing we hear over and over again is that local government shouldn't be political. What's the Republican position on plowing the street versus the Democrat position on that? So there is some degree on that. But there also is, you know, is there a difference between management and leadership? And that's one thing you need to consider. But at the end of the day, it's really about, not how we want to be governed, but how do we want to govern? And the selectman form of government requires more participation. It requires standing up to hateful speech, whether it's a public audience or out in the world, out there. It requires participating, not just criticizing, but volunteering, making a difference. So when you make, you know, when we as the public make the decision, we have to ask ourselves, not how we want to govern, be governed, but how do we want to govern? Are we willing to participate? It does not require as much participation, the town manager, we see that in the other towns that have it, there is less civic participation in those towns, and maybe that's where we're moving, we're seeing volunteers declining throughout the community. And so those are the questions we have to ask ourselves, not how do we want to govern, but how do we want to govern? And what are we willing to do? And what are we willing to speak out to? What are we willing to care? And so, am I grieving? I am grieving. This makes me sad. But do I understand it? I absolutely do. So I just want to thank the members of the commission who put forward such tremendous thoughtfulness, insight, who I believe, you know, anyone who's watching this meeting, I think knows that everyone in this room cares about this community. And then at the end of the day, we can disagree, and we can disagree respectfully. That I don't agree with one person doesn't mean I don't like them, or that they're an evil person. So as we go through this process as a community, I hope we'll reach out. And the other thing, you know, I hope everyone will go up to town staff and thank them, because we do have a tremendous town staff who are professionals. And we've worked very hard to hire professionals. Chris is Chair of Personnel, and everyone who serves on the Personnel Committee has made that a tremendous priority for this town, and we've seen the benefits of that. So that's what I have to say. Tonight makes me a little sad.
Please, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
We're going to have to go back, I believe, so we're going to vote on the items that you're seeking back to us, to make sure that we address all the issues that you raised. Would it be possible to put something down on the paper, to make, so we don't miss anything? Questions asked, I mean, some of the comments, so we want to clarify, it would probably make it easier for us to focus and address.
Well, we would have to do it at a meeting, because I can't speak for the whole board, but I can give you copies of the minutes and things.
So even if you say this is raised, this is raised, just so we won't miss anything that we didn't make notes on.
Yeah, so we have that in our minutes, so we can use it through the minutes that we have.
Yeah, something like that. That would be very helpful. Yep, thank you.
Does anyone else have any other comments?
I'd just like to quickly comment, and we clarified this with Bob at our last meeting, but it's come up a couple times again tonight, and particularly hinges on this democracy question as well. When this board takes a vote, and two of us are missing tonight, so obviously, that will be coming in the future, our charge by state statute is not to decide whether or not we want to let the voters decide. It is whether or not we agree and are recommending a yes vote on each item. So a no vote is not saying, is not obstructing people from voting, it is saying, I don't agree with this. And that's been mentioned a couple times tonight, so I just wanted to underline that. And thank you, Bob, for clarifying that last time.
Did you want me to do it again, or?
You can, yes, go right ahead.
I'm going to read the statute.
Bob, can you take the mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have to adjust a pencil here for a minute. This is what the statute says. "Not later than 15 days after receiving the final report, the appointing authority, Board of Selectmen, by a majority vote of its entire membership," meaning four votes, "shall either approve the proposed charter, or reject the same or separate provisions thereof." So your motion has to be, you approve the proposed charter or separate provisions thereof, or you reject it. The word "approve" to me means, you're not just passing it on neutrally for a vote by the voters, you are recommending it to the voters. That's the way I read the word "approve." I don't know how else you can read it.
Thank you, and especially for that reason, I'd like to thank the Charter Revision Commission for coming in.
Now, having said that, you're the legislative body, you read it, you know, in a way that's not inconsistent, that's my interpretation of the language. So it's, that's what the statute says.
Can I?
We'll go with Chris, first, and then Melissa.
Okay, so I want to respond to that, because, thank you, Bob, because there's a wide interpretation of what that means. So let me tell you what that means to me, because I completely understand that when we pass this to the public, it's an affirmed vote. But we also balance that with the stewardship of a process, which is for an independent group of people to make recommendations, and to bring that to the public, and allow that, the purity of that process to play out. So let me describe what that means to me. So approving doesn't mean it's something I would have recommended. Approving doesn't mean it's what I think is the absolute best decision. Approving means it's something that, you know, Mary, you talked about looking at something that you didn't necessarily approve of, but you kind of digest it, you can understand it, you can appreciate it, you can embrace it. That's what I, that's my definition. And so I will absolutely be skewing towards a slightly more liberal interpretation of that than others might, or as was, I think, defined in the, or understood in the last meeting. And we'll do it in a way that does fully support that it has to be an affirmed vote. So I just want to, I just want to make that, because I felt there was a tone that we have to, we have to agree 1,000%, or it's the best recommendation, or it's the recommendation I would have made, and that is not my interpretation of the parameters by which I'm going to be making decisions on that.
And I would just add to that. The last time we had charter revision, I think you make a great point, Elaine, about it is an opportunity for us to, and it is our job to decide whether to put it to the voters. It's not, we should just be a pass-through, we have a decision to make. But as we do that, as we make our decisions, and what we did the last time, is you can say, yes, I'm approving it, but this should not be an indication that I approve the, I'm approving this to go to the voters for their vote. It doesn't have to be, although the language of what we approve is going to say one thing. Any member of the board has the ability to say to the public, I put it forward because I want, I felt this was important enough for the public to have their choice. So regardless of what is said in the language, you can put it forward for a vote.
So my question of clarification then is, the only way for this to get to the voters is for the requisite number of Board of Selectmen members to vote yes?
Correct, correct.
Four or more.
They cannot say, I vote against this charter because I don't like this charter, but there's no other mechanism for the voters to get that charter, correct?
If the Board of Selectmen were to reject it, your final report?
Yeah.
There is a process where the citizens could petition your final report to the ballot.
Mr. President, if you may, I want to comment. I just, really, for the benefit of folks that are watching, most of the discussion tonight has been why this, our charter revision voted in favor of a town manager. So I want to remind everybody of the split decision, 7-4. And even the folks, including myself, who were in the minority in that vote, were trying to explain why we pushed that forward. But I just want to assure people that the four of us had very strong oppositions for some of the reasons that was just elaborated. But I didn't want that to get lost in that business, because of the discussion, because we're really going to focus on, for the role of town manager. That's actually, that was the recommendations, that's why we had to do it.
I guess I'll clarify, when I was talking about the Board of Education, it wasn't to mean it, it was to make, if you're going this way, make it more like that. And if that's what you want to do, why not use that as the model? This is the thing I would put out there. Because it has worked well, they have been a political.
Lisa?
Yeah.
I would really encourage the public, once the vote comes from the Board of Selectmen, to go back and review the charter revision tapes on SCTV, because I'm sure that the passion of the discussion will be on those tapes, I know it is. And people should see the points of discussion, because I think all of us walked away, at least I hope everyone walks away from tonight at this table with a different flavor from having heard everybody. I know I have, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. And actually, I got a lot out of this, too. I really appreciate the insights that you were able to offer, and the explanations you gave. And I do want to recognize the efforts that you put in. This is contentious, it's hard, and you gave a lot of thoughtful effort to this, and we're very appreciative for everything you did, and I think showed tremendous leadership and community input. There are multiple opportunities for public input, and I just want to thank you for being so welcoming and open to the public in this that you did. And I just do want to reiterate, at the end of the day, and I actually don't know how I'm going to vote, because I am still, as Chris says, grieving. But it's But at the end of the day, no matter how any of us votes, I think we can work together and be good citizens and good friends to each other and respect that there are differences of opinions without being villains in the disagreement. And I think your board has been a great example of that. Vehement disagreement, but came together to work toward doing what is best for the town. So whatever decision we end up with, however the town votes, we're going to work and make it right. Because that's what we do, we're Sinsbury.
I have two things to say. First, have I been up to a meeting? I want this one a little warmer.
Yes.
Lisa will short that motion like that.
The call side, the girl is shivering.
We're fine.
We're toast. A lot of hot air.
He's fine.
Thank you, everyone. We'll continue our meeting, but we'll let you guys up.
No, seriously.
No. We're just going to power down, we're frozen now. We're going to power through.
Yes, sir.
Take care. Hey, Paul, thank you very much. Absolutely.
All right, thanks, everyone. Yeah, we're going to keep going.
Bye. Say hi to the head of town for like two days.
Take care, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you, guys.
Well, hopefully we all will be able to prepare a time, but no guarantees.
Alrighty, so we're just going to continue on.
You got some baseballs in there?
Of course, I got baseballs.
Because I am reading my question.
John's not here to tell you it's too long.
It'll make you feel good.
You're just going to do it real slow, every word.
Yeah. What is that, President Obama does slow? Sing it.
Yeah, sing it. Slow jam.
We'll cheer at the end of each good point.
We're going to slow jam the First Selectmen's report. All right. Yeah.
So moving on to the First Selectmen's report, I do want to let people know that Sinsbury was in the news once again. We were one of a top-five town in Connecticut for solar progress. Congratulations to Director of Public Works and the Clean Energy Task Force for that initiative and for the Board of Selectmen, of course, supporting those projects. I wanted to let folks know that there will be an open house tomorrow night to meet the new Business Resource Coordinator at the library on July 12th. Her name is Sarah Louden Slogger, and that will be from 4:30 to 6:30 with light refreshment served. And so it's a great opportunity to meet some of our professional staff. Tax bills reminder were mailed on June 28th, and they are due to be paid as of August 1st. Please, if you're having issues with the DMV, you're getting bills from towns that you don't live in, call that town and, or speak with our tax collector and assessor's office to get that straightened out, but please pay attention to those bills. People have asked for an update on the Veterans Memorial Project. Construction of that project is scheduled to begin on or about July 18th, with completion of the project anticipated by November 1, 2016. And there will be periodic closures to the entrance of the Sinsbury Public Library, and we did want to let folks know about that, and we apologize for the inconvenience. One new thing that is up and running is legal notices are now on the town website. Many people like information on where to find them, and they can actually sign up to receive those legal notices, so that's a great new asset that the town has added. Remind folks that there are five Fridays of fun with the Top Cut Mountain Music Festival. Congratulations on the first two events, very successful. The town does co-sponsor those events, and we are happy to do so. Family Night at Sinsbury Library is underway on July 13th this week. There is the Jungle Book, the Fall, on July 27th, Eight Below, Wednesday, August 3rd, The Sandlot, and Wednesday, August 10th, Monsters University. And all those begin at 6:30 and are free to the public, so we encourage people to take advantage of that. Elaine and I had the good fortune to attend the Sinsbury Community Band Free Concert last weekend, the Ice Cream Social. So there are lots of free concerts down at Sinsbury Farms on Wednesdays at 7:00 PM, and we encourage people to check that out. There are links in my First Selectmen's Report for those who would like to find out more information. We do have September Fest announced, September 9th, 10th, and 11th. Looking forward to that. September 18th is going to be the 31st Annual Sinsbury Fly-In and Car Show. I wanted to remind folks, as summer is upon us, to sign up for emergency alerts. There are three you should sign up for, and they're on our town website and also the links for it in the First Selectmen's Report.
As Elaine is demonstrating.
She's getting one of those.
No emergency, although anyone who was here during the snowstorm in 2011 remembers how useful those alerts can be when there's no home phone service. So definitely sign up for those.
And we can't get to you unless you sign up, so it is important that you actually take the step of signing up. The town road paving schedule is up and online, so you can see which roads are scheduled to be paved. The Sinsbury Farms ice rink warming room construction is underway. Again, there will be some elimination of parking spots during the building process, and we thank everyone for their patience with that. If you haven't had a chance to see it in action, the electric vehicle charging station is now up and running, and we have had people take advantage of that. Very exciting. Wanted to let folks know that Peach Wave is having their ribbon cutting on July 13th at 4:30 PM, and the law offices of Nicole Vino is having theirs on July 12th at 4:00 PM. If you look under the economic development section of the First Selectmen's Report, I won't go through it all because I've done this in the past, but it lists what's under construction, what's been permitted but no action yet, and what's on the horizon. And so there's lots of good stuff happening in town, and if you're wondering what that is, you can check out the First Selectmen's Report. If you would like to see the First Selectmen's Report, you can get it online tomorrow, it's on our homepage of the town website, or you can sign up to receive it through Town News and announcements. All right, moving on, we will go on to appointments and resignations. Thank you, Elaine. May I have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Mona Herman as a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission effective June 29, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We now have review of the minutes of the special meeting, June 27, 2016, and the regular meetings of June 27, 2016. If there are no motions to make corrections, those meetings will stand as final. Does anyone have any corrections they want to make?
Nope.
Okay. One of the things we were planning on doing was having a discussion as we got to liaison and committee reports about the Performing Arts Center. There are a number, we have received a number of feedback, as was mentioned in public audience, and we are reviewing that feedback. We've asked town staff to pull together information so that we can put together a substantive discussion on it with building committee and some of the other committees that are touched. We will tentatively schedule that for September, given that August, and no one, it's very difficult to get members of the public and members of the committees there, so that will be scheduled in August. You can see why we didn't do it tonight. This would have gone on to midnight if we had done that tonight. And it's, so thank everyone for their patience on that, and once we get that said. But staff is continuing to work hard getting information, but if there's information you feel you need, this board needs from staff to help you make a, kind of thoughtful decision, let me know, and we can get you that information. Does anyone else have any other liaison and subcommittee reports?
I do.
Nope. Well, I, I'll just thank the people who did the car show over the weekend. That was fabulous.
That was great.
It was very exciting.
And they had hot dogs.
And they had hot dogs, which is.
Which is Lisa's favorite.
Even more exciting.
Right. So that, that made it a success for me, so I do want to thank. And I also want to thank all the volunteers in town who worked so hard to put together all these activities.